With that, we'd like to introduce Jill Murilli. She's the Director of Region 9 from the American Public Works Association.
Madam Mayor and Council Members and especially our citizens, it's a privilege to be here as a fellow volunteer but also as a fellow Public Works professional. I happen to hail from the Seattle area, but I have the opportunity of working with a lot of different chapters through APWA, and of course Oregon's one, and of course your fine town is part of that also. The important thing for us at APWA as volunteers is that accreditation is not just a chance for fellow professionals to congratulate fellow professionals. It's really a rigorous evaluation and process and measure of excellence in an agency from a business and service delivery aspect. So not only to get accredited from the very beginning, must you prove that you are doing excellent work and identifying every aspect of your work and improvement, but it's also an opportunity for you to show how not only doing more with less, but truly approaching it from an effective business delivery standpoint, so that you know that our citizens, that all of us are getting the best with the money that we do put into public works. But I'm especially proud of Eugene, not only because some of my friends work here, but also because Eugene is only one of three cities within the state of Oregon that have achieved accreditation, and is the only one that has done this now four times. And we're headed towards a handful, so bravo. And for curiosity's sake, Albany and Bend are the other two cities that have achieved accreditation. You notice that it doesn't necessarily mean that if you're big that you can get it. It's like it's you're mighty and you're effective. The accreditation process identifies a full review of every aspect of your operation and really identifies those cost-saving measures and purchasing of materials even down to that level. It's 157 measures. And to be accredited, you don't actually have to achieve excellence in all of those measures, but guess what Eugene did? Every single one of those measures were met or exceeded. And you can be proud of the team that produced this excellent result. So Madam Mayor, I believe if you would come down. The one thing is our mayor's coming down too, re-accreditation doesn't mean that you're continuing to do the same thing over and over again. It really proves that you are doing better. How do you want to do this?
So officially then, Madam Mayor, on behalf of the American Public Works Association, it's my privilege and pleasure to present to you the re-accreditation of the Eugene
So thank you so much Ms. Murilli and APWA for joining us tonight to celebrate this remarkable accomplishment. This is just another example of how the men and women in our Public Works Department strive every day to make lives better for those living in Eugene. They do this by providing vital services to the community such as returning clean water to local waterways, keeping parks clean and safe for residents and visitors to enjoy, doing what it takes in an emergency to ensure our public facilities, roads and infrastructure are functional, accessible and safe. The re-accreditation process demonstrates that the department continues to maintain its very ambitious standards of excellence. It also ensures that these important responsibilities are in good hands both today and in the future. Public Works Director Kurt Corey will now say a few words on behalf of his team. Congratulations Kurt.
So just a few comments. First, I'd like to thank Jill for making the trip down from Seattle to make the presentation for us this evening. I'd also like to thank our three co-accreditation managers on our team who are here with us this evening, Carla Spangler and Eric Jones and John Hubert. Can I just stand up for a second so everybody knows who you are? Certainly a full team effort to get through this type of a process. And the last one I want to say a word to is you, Mayor Piercey. You've been the mayor for each of the three times we've been through the re-accreditation process, and we didn't know when we'd get another chance to say thanks for your support. As you take on this type of an effort, it doesn't, it's not a top-down proposal. It starts with everyone in our department, but it requires support from the top, and we've had that all these years. So we'd like to present you this certificate this evening, and I'm just going to ask you to indulge while I read what the staff has put together as kind of a play on our mission and value statement for the department. So during your 12 years as mayor, you engineered a consistent and valuable platform for the Public Works Department to operate. Under your leadership, voters have approved two road bonds, the airport broke passenger records on a yearly basis, and the park system continued to expand a true passion for the residents of Eugene. While in office, you always remained a steadfast supporter of Public Works. You actively participated in each of our APWA re-accreditation efforts, meeting with and taking a personal interest in our evaluators. From your persistence to alter the way we approach transportation and its impact on the environment, to your eagerness to lead a group of children around the Roosevelt Yard on Public Works Day, your willingness to make lives better through the thoughtfulness you provide each day has helped make the city a better place to work and live. We thank you very much for your commitment to what we try to do.
Thank you Kurt, very much.
Thank you Eric.
A genuine twofer. Okay, it's hard to move on after that. Thank you again so much. Next up is the Public Forum. The Public Forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have 25 people signed up to speak tonight. First up is Kathy Lynn, followed by Eva Winter.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Lynn. I live in Eugene in Ward 1. I am here today to request that the Eugene City Council introduce a resolution stating support for the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe in their efforts to halt the construction of the Dakota Access Pipeline. The Eugene City Council, the City of Eugene, and the Sustainability Commission have worked hard to weave considerations of social equity into climate and sustainability goals. With this local context, this resolution is all about connecting our local actions to the treatment, to the fair treatment of people everywhere. The Dakota Access Pipeline directly impacts tribal water rights as well as public health through the potential for water contamination. It also directly contributes to the causes of climate change through the transport of Bakken crude oil. Climate change is disproportionately affecting indigenous communities around the world. Rising temperatures, wildfires, flooding, and rising sea levels impact tribal lands, tribal culture, and tribal sovereignty. The National Congress of American Indians made a formal statement and an appeal to tribes and communities all over the country to pass resolutions in support of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. And they stated in part that pipeline projects and the risks associated with pipeline ruptures have irreversible harmful impacts on cultural places, aquifers, and the environment. I am a non-native ally, and as such, I recognize that each day the ground I walk on is not ground that I have right or claim to. Rather, this is land in the Willamette Valley of the Kalapulia. And wherever I may go in the United States or abroad, I know there are histories, cultures, and knowledges that come before me. We must act in solidarity with the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe and their protest of the Dakota Access Pipeline. We must ensure that tribes are fully included in decision-making processes when projects such as this will have such severe impacts on their lands, tribal water rights, and resources. Last Friday on September 9th, a US District Court Judge denied the preliminary injunction request by the tribe to cease construction of the pipeline. That same day, the US Department of Justice, the US Department of the Army, and the US Department of the Interior issued a joint statement that halts the construction. But this is only a temporary halt. Just as you have passed resolutions to oppose coal trains and oil trains here locally, I ask that you consider the recommendations that you'll hear later tonight from the Eugene Native Organizers Coalition and join indigenous communities as well as a growing number of cities, including Portland, Seattle, Minneapolis, and St. Paul, in passing a resolution in support of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva Winter is up next. No clapping please, thank you. Eva Winter followed by Cindy Kohler.
Hello, my name is Eva Winter. I'm a Eugene resident and I live in Ward 3. I'm also a recently graduated former swimmer from Swarthmore College. I competitively swam for 15 years, and while I've lived in Eugene, I swam for Willamette Swim Club, Team Eugene Aquatics, and the South Eugene High School Team. I'm here to ask the city council to place a covering over Amazon Pool and provide other swimming resources, because I know firsthand how beneficial swimming has been and can be to our community. Swimming throughout my early years provided me with a healthy lifestyle that allowed me to create my own competitive spirit and learn how to achieve my own goals individually, which I think is what sets swimming apart from many other sports. But another huge advantage that swimming gave me was getting into a prestigious school. As I'm sure everyone in the audience knows and remembers, being 18 or having children at that age, college admissions can be a difficult process that adds a lot of stress to junior and senior year of high school. I, like my sister who swam for Cornell University, was a 4.0 student at South Eugene, but just being a good student is no longer enough to get into good schools across the US. I know that swimming helped me get into Swarthmore. And although Division 3 schools do not offer scholarships for sports, after working in the head swim coach's office for two years, I know that the coaches are still allowed to send a list of swimmers to the admissions board, which does end up factoring into admissions decisions. Most of the swimmers I know got into their schools in the falls of their senior years, which took off stress from their senior years and allowed them to get into better schools due to their competitive swimming experience. Swimming can provide the young adults in Eugene to both get into better schools and help them develop important life skills. However, there's not enough pool space in Eugene for the sheer number of people of all ages who want to swim. During my four years at South Eugene High School, the coach had to hold extremely difficult practices for at least two to three weeks in order to reduce the number of swimmers in the pool from the 50 or 60-plus who wanted to swim to less than 40 because the YMCA only has four lanes. Due to the many different ages, age groups, and events that have to fit into the Sheldon Pool, the temperature of Sheldon is so, is too hot for long competitive practices. I believe that there should be, not be a limitation on pool space when there's such an overwhelming amount of young people, especially young students, who both want to swim and could have opportunities to get into better schools and have more life opportunities if they had more space to pursue competitive swimming. Thank you.
Up next is Cindy Kohler, followed by Thomas Brown.
Good evening and welcome back. My name is Cindy Kohler. It's good to see everyone again. I reside in Ward 2 now. I'm here tonight representing AFSMI Local 1724 as a president serving, I'm coming to the tail end of my sixth year as president. We represent just over 600 City of Eugene employees, some of whom work part-time and make less than a living wage, which requires them to work other part-time jobs or even consider public assistance. So that's why I'm here tonight. I first wanted to say thank you all for your leadership, particularly the leadership around the paid sick leave. I know you started out with looking at paid sick leave for Eugene, City of Eugene, and you inspired the rest of the state to really embrace paid sick leave for all workers in Oregon. So thank you for that, and I'm here tonight to ask for your leadership again. Lonnie is bringing up, or perhaps you already have, already have them, excellent, some documents here regarding the living wage ordinance that was implemented by the City of Corvallis. I hope you'll take a minute to take a look at the information that's provided. One of the best things about my role as President of AFSMI 1724 is I'm provided an opportunity to meet with all new employees, and it's great to meet with them. We talk about their rights under the contract, and we spend an extraordinary amount of time talking about their responsibilities as public servants. I always ask how long they've worked for the City of Eugene, and usually, most employees have been here for two weeks, two months, a short period of time, but consistently, almost every new employee orientation, we have employees who have been here for years as temporary employees, years, two years, 10 years. Some of our recreation employees have been here for decades. They do not make a living wage. They do not get paid leave. If there is a holiday, site is closed, they don't get paid for it. They don't work, they don't get paid. Your kid's sick, you need family vacation, school reunion, family reunion, no work, no pay. That's not fair. That's not who we are. The practice at the City of Eugene is to hire temporary employees. They have a six-month cap, however, because some of the employees that come in are really good, solid workers. So they'll work on one crew for six months, shift to a different crew for six months, shift to a different crew for six months, or go back to their original crew because some of the work is seasonal. And they wind up working here for years, years. It's simply not fair. It's not, it's not who we are. They don't have healthcare. It's just, it's not right. It's just not the right thing to do. When the city asks the union to extend time for a temporary worker, we typically will grant that because it's project work. We want to make sure that the project work gets done and is completed and is done well. But we always require them to increase their wages. Thank you.
Thomas Brown is next, followed by Bob Cassidy.
Yeah, Thomas Brown, I live in Eugene. Oh, I don't know my ward number, sorry. Hello, I have very little experience in public speaking, so I ask for your patience. I have heard the argument that, and I'm sure you've heard it also, that minimum wage is a perfectly fine for young entry-level kids, but many of the city's employees are not high school graduates just starting out to find a career. Many temporary employees have been working for the city for many years with, with such an inequality, the only reason I can understand for them staying on the job is that they must love it. Good leadership means getting the job done in the best way and most efficient way possible. Good leaders take care of those who work for them. Good leaders expect their employees to do their best, do their task to the best of their abilities, and in exchange, the employers, employees expect to be treated fairly. I can understand how a company watches every dollar and, and I understand that the city has budget constraints, but in all fairness, the city's temporary employees, some of whom have been on the payroll for many years, should be paid at the same rate as their coworkers with the same skills. Raising the wages for temporary workers isn't just a nice gesture, it's the right thing to do. It will improve the quality of life for them and their families. It is, it is the right thing to do, but let's not stop there. Let's, let's tie their wages to the cost of living. This would help stop the economic inequality from continuing to get worse. Thank you.
Bob Cassidy is next, followed by Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton.
Bob Cassidy, Eugene. You have heard from very important people that inequity is a major problem in the country. Some of us say that it's the most important problem. And it's not just wealth or education or opportunities that, that we need to focus on. Some of the focus should be on, it's not necessarily the two high wages, but at the other end of the income ladder, a low pay or minimum wage pay is really the guts of the problem we have. The problem is not that some people have too much money, you can't take it away from them anyway, they want to keep it. The problem is that too many don't have enough to live a normal life. We in Eugene foster that problem by paying wages that qualify our employees for the food stamp crowd. Food stamps are provided to those who are considered to be at poverty level, and living at that style for a period of time causes many to fall victim to homelessness and all sorts of problems. One major financial problem dooms them to a life of failure. They have not had enough income to build future savings. Pay scales for our temporary workers, over 700 of them, are low enough to put them in food stamps. Some of these temporary workers have been working for over 20 years. It's morally wrong. Relying on a state minimum standard is insufficient. The state has changed the law a bit, but relying on this law, which will still be insufficient by the time it comes into effect, is doing nothing but promoting poverty for our city employees. Across the nation, the buzzword is $15 an hour now. Get on board, give good leadership to the community.
Thank you, Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton. Frenzer-Nolton is next, followed by Joan Cypress.
Good evening. I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. I live in Eugene, Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton. Tonight, I'd like to bring to your attention and highlight a local network of groups that are amplifying the Native American voices here and their leadership for, for the environment and for speaking up for tribal sovereignty. The network, Native Organizers Coalition, was formed in response of thousands, in response to thousands gathering to protect water resources at Standing Rock and in the ongoing issues surrounding the Dakota Access Pipeline. The tribes are also gathering to protect tribal sovereignty and to speak up for national reforms concerning process and procedure on infrastructure projects like the pipeline in order to provide meaningful input, consultation, and consent from our tribal governments. We'd like to request tribal council, we'd like to request city councils' active participation in this effort, starting with our request for a counselor to step forward to help us introduce a resolution to city council in support of the tribe's position. There are several cities have already done so, Portland and Seattle included. Seattle's was unanimous. The halt on the construction, if you've heard about it, is temporary right now, and promises for discussion and improved process and procedure are vague at best. So what we're hoping for is a counselor to step forward, and as you all remember, last spring, we supported as a city, and it was wonderful, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and this is an opportunity for our city council to walk our talk. Thank you.
Joan Cypress is next, followed by LeAnn Joshua.
Hi, my name is Joan Cypress. I reside in Ward 2. I'm here to request that 2017 be the year to bring back the Eugene Parade. My family migrated from Nashville, Tennessee, and we discovered Oregon. We moved to Eugene in 1983 for many reasons, one being to experience more cultural events. We really loved the Eugene celebration highlighted by the parade. Life in the Wild West was truly the best, however, it took a turn for the worse when our daughter Dawn got very sick. In 1995, I was lucky enough to be willing and able to donate my right kidney to her, and it was so right, she got healthy and back to the living. Talk about celebrating life, being extremely proud of a main mission in my lifetime, I was definitely happier than ever and got involved with many community endeavors. I was ready to share and express the joy of the miraculous outcome. Low and behold, in 2004, I won the title of Slug Queen and chose Scarlett O'Slymara as my persona. I've been a part of the celebration parade each and every year since then. It is a way to celebrate the good things in life, and goodness knows, we all have enough sorrow. The night that I was chosen queen, I promised if chosen that I would put on a ball to help alleviate hunger. Later that year, my event took in more than 2,000 pounds of canned goods for food for Lane County. It also inspired the request that all the future queens have a ball to promote their worthy cause. The parade only lasts a few hours, but the goodwill generated around it and from it and through it goes on year-round. Now presently knowing I was coming here tonight to express myself, a dear friend reminded me that Eugene is known as the city of outdoors and arts. Well, the queen Scarlett in me has to say, I do declare, I love a parade, and not having one in our diverse city just isn't fitting. So as a mom who has enjoyed our city having an annual parade that brings uplifting memories to a community that thrives on sharing the many arts, charities, organizations, et cetera, that a parade can offer, I hope that your committee will decide it's time to bring music, dance with positive messages back to the streets of Eugene. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. LeAnn Joshua is next, followed by Lori Powell.
I'm LeAnn Joshua. I live in the unincorporated areas of Eugene and Santa Clara proper. I moved here in 1994, and the first thing I did was join the Eugene Celebration Committee. We taped typewriters together that year for the Typewriter Throw, so that's how long ago it was. There were still typewriters in existence. Two years later, I became a part of the Eugene Celebration Parade Committee, and then a few years later than that became apparently the permanent co-EMC of the Eugene Celebration Parade and Pet Parade, which I did from 1999 until last year. So there is not a parade I haven't seen in a very long time. In my opinion, the parade is a way not only to express our joy, but to express our community and the diversity and the oddness and the weirdness and the quirkiness and the creativity that this city is known for. And I feel that when September rolls around now, there's a gaping hole where the Eugene Celebration used to be, where the parade used to be, and where the pet parade used to be. In 2001, on September 15th, we had a Eugene Celebration Parade. I was a member of the planning committee, and we wondered, four days after 9/11, do we have a parade? Is it the right thing to do? We toned the parade down a little bit from the traditional nuns marching in their habits and people dressed in portakans and samba ja and people on unicycles wearing celts. It was slightly more somber tone that year, but we had the parade anyway, and I remember the community coming together after three days of watching nothing but sadness on television and the need that people had for joy and being a sense, having a sense of community once again. To me, that will never escape my mind, as I spend most of my life trying to entertain people and make them laugh. That day was very sad, but it was also very happy. Subsequent to that, we once had to have a parade at 8:00 in the morning because there was some kind of conflict with the police being able to patrol the intersections, and so people showed up in their pajamas. And so people showed up in their pajamas with their children. Eugene wants the parade. We need the parade. We've got the Sunday Streets now. That's a great event. But it happens in different communities, and it doesn't bring all the communities together for one event. In my opinion, when we, I'm saying when, I'm assuming you guys all agree and want the parade back. When the city takes the parade back, I would love it to take on the city streets model of not having any motorized vehicles in it, because I don't think that's good for the planet or the children who are in the parade and being led off by the pet parade, because that really brings all of the community together, human and non-human. Thank you very much.
Lori Powell is next, followed by Cliff Gray, I mean, followed by Bob Doppold, and then Cliff Gray.
Good evening, councilors. So nice to be back, and thank you for this opportunity. Tough act to follow, LeAnn Joshua, but the message and the segue is perfect. Hi, my name is Lori Powell. I live in Ward One. I'm a member of 350 Eugene, and I am here concerning the Climate Recovery Ordinance. By way of review, I applaud the council's unanimous vote this summer in support of science-based reductions in carbon emissions as part of the Climate Recovery Ordinance. And now I would like to read excerpts from yesterday's guest's viewpoint by Mary Demacher, 350 co-founder, to offer inspiration for the hard work ahead concerning the CRO. And this has to do with tomorrow's landmark court case hearing. Let me read some excerpts for you. As U.S. District Judge Ann Aiken prepares to preside over the next step in the landmark federal climate change lawsuit brought by 21 young plaintiffs in Eugene this week, I offer a prayer. Please bless those young hearts thrumming with anxiety as they take on the U.S. government and hundreds of fossil fuel corporations who insist children don't, in fact, have a right to a livable planet. Please tip the scales of justice a wee bit in the children's favor by helping the judge recognize in the children's courage, passion for life, and vulnerability what can only be called holiness, so that she might lay down the law in service of such incandescence. Bless the corporate lawyers who represent Exxon, Koch Industries, and fossil fuel giants and help the lawyers awaken to their own sacred light. Go crimson with self-reproach and, amazing grace-like, turn their legal ships around to instead, just imagine, support the children who aren't, after all, begging for trips to Disneyland or smartphones or even free tuition or braces, but the most heartbreaking of all things, hope for lives worth living in whatever world we leave them. Bless the parents who raise the children to speak up when it matters, who lavish affection and affirmation and still manage even as they battle despair in their own hearts, to help with homework and throw birthday parties and frisbees and grant them humor, resilience, and resources to keep children whole in a culture that sabotages their future. Help us to make it no longer profitable to extinguish species that have hummed, galloped, clawed, hibernated, hovered, spun, slithered, pollinated, and sung for hundreds of millions of years on earth. Help us end this slow-motion, motion, world-wrecking madness. And guide the public to the federal courthouse tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., Tuesday, September 13th, and be with the students and their families who will march from South Eugene High School parking lot to the courthouse. Thank you.
Bob Doppold is next, followed by Cliff Gray.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Bob Doppold. I've lived here for 45 years, and I am switching gears a little bit, but I want to say that it's odd for me to be here, because it's going to sound like I'm talking against bicycles, but I'm not. I'm an avid bicycle rider. I think it's important for sustainability reasons and for my waistline to ride a lot. But I'm here to ask you to prohibit bicycles on the Ridgeline Trail between Foxhalla Road and Dillard Road. And again, this is a very strange request from me. I feel strange. But my wife and I had a very scary experience just a week ago where we were, she was almost very seriously injured by a bike coming fast over a hill at a blind turn. Very lucky not to get very seriously hurt. And this is about the sixth or seventh time we've experienced something like this over the last four or five months. And we see it in other people walking the trails. There's people with canes, there's kids and their parents, there's people with dogs walking. And we see bikes riding very quickly right by them on this trail all the time, often yelling at people, the walkers, to get out of their way. And this simply, we've had enough. This has got to end. It turns out that seven out of the 10 segments of this trail already prohibit bikes. And that obviously had a lot to do with safety reasons. I want to encourage you to add an eighth segment of the trail. And the reason I'm bringing it to you is because we've talked with the staff, interacted with the staff from the city who manages that park staff, and they said point-blank by phone call to me that they will not take that step to prohibit these bikes. And so I think it's got to be decided at a level higher than that, which is you. This is an accident waiting to happen, and I strongly encourage you to ask the city, encourage the city, pass an ordinance, whatever you need to do, to make this safe before someone gets seriously hurt. Thank you.
Cliff Gray is next, followed by Kristi Murray.
Cliff Gray, Ward Seven. I wanted to relate to you that one of my most profound experiences in my labor days was the strike of 1983 at Greyhound, San Francisco. And I realized for the first time that all those people I was working with, all those employees, had families, because they brought them to the little trailer to get their little extra change to help them out throughout the strike. And ATU provided not till generously for that. So from that day forward, I became an activist, and I think I've never stopped. Anyway, that's what you have to think about your employees here, which is about the $15 an hour wage that we're asking for. It has been calculated that, well, for one, you have to know these people have families, and you've got to expect that they have children to support. And secondly, there was a calculation in Lane County that says that the living wage for one adult and one child worked out to be $23.38 an hour. $23.38. So 15 is not so much to ask for. And I think it's more bearable to have them at least up to 15, maybe more later, we'll see on that issue. Now, I'm going to mention another issue, which I'm working on separately, but connected as well, and that is rent control. I want you to put this figure into your minds and think about. That is the maximum allowable rent increase in San Francisco and many, many other California cities. Now, my job, what I'm doing about that is I am spearheading an effort to defeat the prohibition against rent control at the state level. And hopefully, we have a plan that may work. We're first going to appeal to legislatures to do that for us, and then we have other plans beyond that if it fails. Anyway, that's it. I'm spearheading the Rent Control Now group throughout the state. If you have any questions on that, please feel free to comment me. I have my contacts on my sheet for you to think about. Thank you very much.
Kristi Murray is next, followed by David Pichioni.
Hi, my name is Kristi Murray, and I'm a resident of Eugene. And Betty Taylor is, I'm in your ward. I just want to thank the city council for being hard-working, dedicated council members. And just to piggyback real quick first on what Cliff just said about a living wage, I had read that if the minimum wage was kept up, you know, over the years, it would have actually been $26, and so 15 isn't, I mean, we're not even caught up to what it needs to be if it's just $15, but $15 would be a start. Actually, I wanted to also say something about supporting Standing Rock, and I plead for the city council to make a resolution supporting the opposition of construction of the DAPL, the Dakota Access Pipeline. I'm rather nervous, sorry. Standing Rock Tribe is engaged in a determined defense of their treaty rights and their environmental heritage. I believe that we in Eugene need to support Native peoples and their rights. With pipelines in North Dakota, Oregon, and in other states in America, we run the risk of contaminating our rivers and lakes and soil and aquifers. Please do not leave our drinking water needs to bottled water companies. Water is life, no DAPL.
Thank you. David Pichioni is next, followed by Lonnie Douglas.
My name is Dave Pichioni, Ward Seven. I think that's right. I'm not sure. Anyway, I'm a representative of, I'm on the board of ESSN and Healthcare for All Oregon, and I'm here to ask you guys to support the temporary workers who are working under 20 hours a week. Usually, they get paid, they usually get 19 hours a week so that they don't have to get benefits in healthcare. So at this point, we're not asking for more hours or for the benefits such as coverage or any of that. We just want them to get the minimum wage, that's the livable wage, that would be what we hope would help them out a little bit. Now, it is understood in the studies of how much it takes to live, that the hourly wage that a person needs to make is probably a little bit over $20. And obviously, that's a little ambitious right now. And right now, the workers are making minimum wage, which is probably $12 or $13. So we would hope that you guys would support them to get $15 an hour. Thank you very much. And support the Indians and the environment. Thank you.
Lonnie Douglas is next, followed by Dharmika Henshaw.
Hello, my name is Lonnie Douglas. I'm the co-chair for the Eugene Springfield Solidarity Network. The Eugene Springfield Solidarity Network and our allies began a campaign in January 2015, asking the city of Eugene to provide a fair living wage for all city workers, including its temporary and contract workers. We believe a fair living wage starts at $15 an hour. The city of Corvallis instituted a living wage ordinance in 2001 that included the city's temporary and contract workers. When they did this, the sky didn't fall. Small businesses didn't fold up shop and move elsewhere. The world didn't end. We are asking the city of Eugene to follow Corvallis's example. Our view of the city of Eugene's general and recreation temporary compensation plan, dated July 1, 2016, shows only one position with a minimum starting wage of $15 an hour. In 2015, the city of Eugene had 696 temporary positions. Many of those positions are workers who've worked for the city for years. These workers are limited no more than 19 hours a week. And at $11.21, which is the maximum pay a person can make if they are at the 702 salary grade, a worker will make at most $213 a week or $852 a month. The minimum wage should be a minimum fair living wage for a worker who receives 40 hours of work a week, and should be enough for that worker to support themselves and their family without receiving public assistance. But even with our recent win and raise of the minimum wage here in Oregon, it's not the reality for Oregonians. According to, according to March, to the March 2012 study by the Center of Economic and Policy Research, the minimum wage should have reached $21.72, that's in 2012, if it kept up with the cost of living increase. Yet here we are in 2016 with a minimum wage of $975, and in six years, we can look forward to a minimum wage of $1350. We are here today to ask you to look at the city of Corvallis's living wage ordinance and help us to come up with our own ordinance that will ensure all of our city workers, including our temporary and contract workers, make a living wage, a living wage of $15. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Y'all have a nice day.
I just want to remind everyone, as you can see, these are very sensitive, so you don't have to get right up on it like you used to, because you can be heard on it. So give it a little space. Dharmika Henshaw is next, followed by Charlie Swanson.
Is this a good distance?
I think so. We'll check it out.
My name's Dharmika Henshaw. I am grateful for all the eloquent speakers before me on all these issues. I am a non-Native ally for Standing Rock. I've lived in Eugene for a while in Ward Seven. My daughter is from Cannonball, North Dakota, which is just up the hill from this camp of water protectors. Her father, Derwin White Lightning, grew up in Cannonball. He lived in Eugene for nine years. He was full-blood Dakota. He was active in leading ceremonies, and he led and participated in peace walks, Anti-Patriot Act awareness walks, and was always bringing up the issues of Native American sovereignty and treaty rights. If he was alive today, he'd be in North Dakota, where over 5,000 people, primarily Indigenous from all walks of life, have gathered to take a stand to protect our water for present and future generations by standing up to prevent the Dakota Access Pipeline from being completed and crossing under the Missouri River, the drinking water source for over 17 million people downstream. Pipelines leak and break. It's a fact. It's just a question of where and when. Also, we have an overheated planet that we're responsible for, and it's way past time to wean ourselves off of fossil fuels. We need a massive investment in clean energy and infrastructure for the people of this country, not for-profit energy companies from Canada. There was no environmental impact statement done on the cumulative effects of over 1,000 miles of pipeline, which is continuing a precedent that started, I believe, in 2012, when the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers started approving chunks of these large infrastructure projects with minimalist environmental assessments. Thankfully, the Department of Justice recognized on Friday that the National Environmental Policy Act needs to be applied, and an environmental impact statement is needed. Finally, this proposed pipeline is crossing territory that by treaty is land of the Great Sioux Nation. Ceremonial and burial areas have already been destroyed. The best bottom lands were flooded for a dam to prevent flooding of city populations downstream years ago. Indigenous people have long been killed in the past and, in some instances today, mistreated certainly. And today, they are still standing up for a sustainable planet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Swanson is next, followed by Carol Scherer.
I'm Charlie Swanson from Ward Three. I'm here to speak in support of Eugene raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour as soon as feasible. I want to point out that I want to point out that although state law preempts Eugene from doing that citywide, as some people have pointed out already, it allows the city to raise the wage for city employees, for contract workers. But there's also another category that needs to be looked at and thought about carefully, and that is any private employer that receives a tax abatement or any sort of tax break that has more than 10 employees. The state allows the city to control the minimum wage of that group also. So I want to urge you to look into that as well as the city workers and the contract workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Shearer is next, followed by Ada Ball.
Hi, I'm Carol Sheer, and I'm in Mike Clark's ward. I'm not used to being in front of a group of people either. And you can see, many of us tonight are not used to doing that. But the people are rising. You know, we're really upset with corporate socialism. And that's why we have a minimum wage that is so much lower than what is a fair living situation for people. That's why we need rent control. That's why we're having a fossil fuel situation. That's why we're having the Chamber of Commerce coming out against Measure 97. That's why we're asking for support for DAPL, for the situation for the indigenous people there. It all comes because corporations are controlling us. And to the extent that we're not paying a minimum wage that's living for people, the taxpayers are taking up that difference and giving it basically to the likes of Walmart in the food stamps and the other things that are needed to supplement their employees so that they can live fairly well. We also have a homeless situation, of course, as you know. That all adds together. It's corporate socialism that is wrong and is a grandma with purpose. I'm here because I want that changed. It will not benefit me, because I won't live that long to see it. But time is now, and the people are rising, the people are listening. And we're going to be speaking out, even though it's not comfortable, because we know the truth and because we care about our children. So please give consideration for the temporary employees who deserve much more than $15 an hour. And if it's not in your hands, if it's in your management, management hands instead, make for sure that the manager does that, or have a manager that will do that. Thank you.
Ada Ball is next, followed by Su Sierra Lupe.
Hi, my name is Ada Ball. I live in Chris Pryor's ward. I am an enrolled member of the Confederated Tribes, the Soletts. That's an Oregon tribe on the coast. And I am a member of the Native Organizers Coalition. I'm here tonight to request that the city urgently release a resolution to be stating that we are in solidarity for the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe, and additionally, opposing the Dakota Access Pipeline at a city level. I was last here when you all voted to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 10th, rather than Columbus Day. And I worked with Phil Karasgo on drafting that resolution, which the Human Rights Commission also adopted. And so I'd like to offer myself as a resource for drafting the city resolution in solidarity for Standing Rock. And by urgently pursuing these recommendations, you, city of Eugene, affirm that this is a city dedicated to upholding human rights and the rights of Native Americans, Alaska natives, Native Hawaiians who are on the front lines protecting the land and water for us all and future generations. So I hope there is a city councillor tonight who is willing to work on, work with us, the Native Organizers Coalition, on drafting the city resolution. And my email is on that card, and I'll also be emailing you all tomorrow. So I look forward to working with you all. Thanks.
Su Sierra Lupe is next, followed by Mia Singer.
My name is Su Sierra Lupe, and I live in George Brown's ward. Thank you for your service. On August 28th, Occupy Medical, for which I am the clinic manager, we all trooped together, and we went to Coos Bay, and we had a lovely time there. We set up another demo clinic and served about 43 patients. It was, we continuously do this every year. We'll set up a demo clinic in a different city in Oregon to give the model that healthcare truly is a human right, and it's a human right that every Oregonian deserves. So we spent several hours sitting up the clinic ahead of time. We came down for four different day trips, giving them some samples of our protocols, some samples of the templates that we have for our forms, because with medical, you have to have a lot of forms. We also brought in boxes of medical supplies that were donated. And one of their allies, this is the Nancy Deveraux Center, which is a secular day center that they unhoused their rely on a great deal. They also have a secular sleeping place, which is the T H E House. And we worked with them and got them established with a good first aid kit. They do have a nurse that works with them, so they had some good trained staff to help them out. Within this process, the idea is that they will be doing a clinic there once a month. And since they do have a nursing school there, I think that they'll be successful. They have scant resources. They have a few things against them, which even though the resources that they have are monitored by some wonderful, highly-trained volunteers and really good-hearted citizens, they have unfortunately an anti-hand handling ordinance, which is bleeding their people dry. Now, of course, this is coming at the same time as this February. Some of you already know that food stamps were adopted. So for example, a couple of two elderly get $235, and as of February, they're surviving on $180. And when you have limited food boxes, that becomes a real problem. So we've got people that are elderly right now that are able to get fewer and fewer amounts of food boxes, weight in their food boxes, because they're losing weight and not able to lift them. For the scant resources they have there in Coos Bay, it's a real issue. Also, Banden, their sister city, is, has an anti-poor ordinance. The police officers will pick up any unhoused person and take them to city limits. We watched that an unhoused elderly person get dropped off at the end of city limits. This kind of pressure on the city is the reason why, sorry, is the reason why people are suffering, and it looks like will be coming back.
Next up is Mia Singer, and Misa Jew is after that.
Hello, my name is Mia Sanger. I live in Eugene, and I'm a freshman at South Eugene High School. I am an active user of both Sheldon and Amazon pools, and I hope the city council will enlarge our pool space. Here are a few reasons why this is a valuable goal for Parks and Recs. I have been swimming with Team Eugene Aquatics for six years and will be swimming for the South Eugene High School swim team this year. I truly love to swim, and no other sport is as beneficial to my health and well-being. More importantly, nothing else lifts my mood like swimming. Swimming has opened up so many new places, friendships, and opportunities I never would have expected to find. I am very familiar with swimming in Sheldon Pool since our team practices there half the time. I am not here to complain, but I need to point out that Sheldon Pool was not designed or adjusted to accommodate up to 60 swimmers practicing high-intensity, challenging workouts, nor was it intended to be used for hundreds of swimmers and parents to attend a swim meet in one small swim center. The pool itself is warm to a significant degree to accommodate elderly patrons or small children in city swim lessons who cannot tolerate the cold water. I understand why the elderly and little swim lessons, who, kids, they need the warm water, but warm water seriously inhibits competitive swimmers like myself, who need to practice and race, which also causes overheating for me and my teammates. Another pool that Team Eugene practices in in the summer is Amazon. I am here to urge the city council to place a seasonal covering on Amazon Pool. Amazon is kept at the perfect temperature for competitive swimming, workouts, and races, stopping swimmers from having to cool down from overheating. And Amazon has a training pool that little kids could use and could be kept at a different temperature. As opposed to Echo Hollow, another pool that Team Eugene practices at, the pool deck would be much less slippery in the winter as eliminating a safety hazard of tripping and falling. More importantly, if Amazon was covered in the winter, this would open up so many new possibilities for swimmers to practice and race in a larger, more inviting center, which would encourage more kids to practice or join the team. Potentially, more swim meets could take place at Amazon, which would, which would encourage swimmers from all over Oregon, Washington, and California to come to Eugene. Instead of just attracting track visitors, we could also attract swimming enthusiasts. Finally, putting a cover on Amazon, allowing it to be used year-round, would allow more opportunities for recreational swimming and encourage physical fitness and recreation. It would be incredibly beneficial to the Eugene community and to our swimmers if the city council would consider this proposal. Thank you very much.
Lisa is up next, followed by Max Roy.
I'm Misa Jew, and my councilperson is George Brown. I do want to start out by thanking the U.S. officials, because we live in a state where our officials generally have taken good care of water. And that is a blessing. I am part of an organization called PAC Alliance in solidarity with the Native Organizers Coalition of Flane County. In North Dakota, near Standing Rock Reservation, something of national significance regarding climate change, water, and treaty rights happen that will make it easier for people in every state to protect water. In answering Standing Rock's reservation's call, every tribe in the United States showed up. Even Oregon tribes, all the Oregon tribes, showed up to answer their call and be part of a peaceful, prayerful, indigenous-led struggle to stop the Dakota Access Pipeline from destroying ancestral lands and the Missouri River, the water source for 18 million North Dakotans. This movement actually reached up to 10,000 people and stopped the Dakota Access Pipeline destruction. And it has framed the national conversation regarding the fossil fuel industry as we all work hard to protect the last of our waters in our own home states. Although Eugene is over 1,000 miles away from Standing Rock, this is our chance to confront the Goliath of the fossil fuel industry, where it has been stopped on the Missouri River, and make our work easier at home to protect water from harm. I urge you to draft a resolution to support the Standing Rock Sioux's right of consultation and consent, which was ignored by DAPL. And the Portland office of the Army Corps of Engineers is the office who has the capacity to deny DAPL the permit, unable to pass the environmental impact study, which they also ignored. And we are in a good position to make a difference, joining the city councils of Portland and Seattle to take a stand for water with Standing Rock. Water is life. Thank you.
Max Roy is next, followed by Joe Tyndall.
Madam Mayor, councilors, Mr. Ruiz, thank you for your work you do. I guess the horse has already left the barn. I was here to speak about the annexation you approved earlier at 160 Howard. The letter I received in my mailbox indicated that at 7:30 tonight, I get a chance to speak about this, but I guess it's already been approved. I wanted to just go on record and point out some inconsistencies with this letter I approved or I received. It says a full recommendation will be available September 8, 2016. It wasn't. The, the letter does not, no verbal or written comments were asked for. And in the second letter that I got by going to the planning department, I highlighted here, it says no written testimony has been received as of this date. I called, my neighbors called. So this kind of, this kind of contradicts what this said. And I just wanted to go on record, stating that. And I guess that's all I have. I'll see you when the partition is applied for. Thank you.
Joe Tyndall is next, followed by Stefan Streck.
Hello, Joe Tyndall. I hope all of you had a great summer. It's been a while since I have spoken here. But until the current situation is rectified, I will take some of your time in 400-word increments. Four years ago, when you appointed me to the Police Commission as the replacement token liberal, I asked the outgoing token liberal why he did not seek a second term. He replied that it was a waste of time, and then outlined how he had been scolded, corrected, neutralized, and otherwise silenced. I have experienced exactly what he described. Initially, it was one commissioner who, for example, would interrupt to say that I could not ask a question. Then I, I would then reply that I will ask any question I choose. After three years of this kind of behavior, she finally termed out. Another commissioner then took over the, took over as the political correctness champion. I tolerated this until he crossed the line by legislating limits on free speech. Now that I am a private citizen and no longer governed by his edict, it is time to get this problem fixed. You might want to read his quote, "working agreement," unquote. But the link disappeared from the commission agenda's webpage. This is the only missing packet for the 63 meetings since July 2010, when URLs were added, when URLs to agendas first appeared. His censorship rules are worded in an innocuous and unobjectionable manner. What they boil down to is a ban on impeaching the dominant narrative, a prohibition on offending anyone's feelings with facts, ideas, or revelations that might make someone uncomfortable. Folks are happy when you agree with them, but question their beliefs, and these days, you will be publicly shamed. In my remaining 100 words, I will consider the larger issue. In the past, it was conservatives that sought to limit free speech. With the ascendancy of third-wave, intersectional feminist social justice warriors, it is now the left that has become regressive and opposes, and opposes the Enlightenment values enshrined in our Constitution, especially free speech. Feminists dogpile on anyone challenging their rhetoric. In an editorial a year ago, I predicted Trump would prevail because he was actively battling the political correctness monstrosity. This is the first time I will vote for a Republican for president. Trump is the lesser threat to democracy. Political correctness has infected our police commission. More on this next time. Thank you.
Stefan Streck is next, followed by Lisa Lombardo.
Good day, everybody. My name is Stefan Streck, and I had a great summer. I hope that everyone else has had a fantastic summer as well. Shortly after this primary election, I got a solid 1,000 votes from good people in our city. They are fantastic, intelligent, independent people, and they all deserve to be spoken for. Somehow, this week in the Eugene Weekly, this same slogan, "Make Eugene Great Again", which I've, I've been saying "Make Eugene Great Again" for almost a year now. It's there inside front page of the Eugene Weekly. "Make Eugene Great Again." There's a lot of people that have heard this slogan, this catchphrase, this intellectual property, and they've embraced this way of life. This is a, you know, revolutionary thing that's going on in Eugene. I registered as a Republican. I'm a real Republican. I'm a National Rifle Association member. I'm with the Oregon Firearms Federation. I also go down to the Baron's Den, and when I do, I pack a .45. I love the people of Eugene, and every single day, I care about what it takes to make Eugene great again. Simple things, global warming. Man-made global warming? That's a farce. It's a government farce. It's sexist terminology is what it is. If they called it woman-made global warming, you think it would get anywhere? Not anywhere. No. I don't believe in woman-made global warming either. Moving on, taxes. There's too much taxes here. You people want to put up taxes on marijuana? It's still federally illegal. You people want to make money off of that? I see that as a conflict of interest. Also, there's too much taxes on, in the first place. My family has been fighting against taxes since 1776, when we told King George, "No taxation without representation." Too much. The government has enough taxes to cover all the bills that they want for everything because they have land. Land use generates more money than anything, and the government owns more than half the land west of the Mississippi. That's not enough resources that people like me, stuff to be taxed? I'm a minimum wage worker. Why do I have to pay like 20, 30% of my taxes? Because... Because people have to be irresponsible with their resources. That's not right. And then what happens is we have our good town flooded with hobos. Some of them are good people. They're great. They tell me, "I love you." You know, rock on. Okay, that's great. And then some of them will try and fight you when you tell them to quit trespassing in your garbage can. You know, it's ridiculous. They're addicted to meth, heroin, cocaine, crack, other random internet drugs. They steal. They're awful. It's a real problem, and it's gotten worse over the past 10 years. You know, my friend 10 years ago first tried heroin in the park, Betty Taylor's district. 10 years from now, no, 10 years right now, that same bum who was selling kids heroin back then, he's still selling them drugs now, and is prohibited from being kicked out by the cops because of this homeless ordinance that permits drug addicts to sell drugs in our parks. It's wrong. Thank you.
Lisa Lombardo is next.
My name is Lisa Lombardo, and I live in Eugene in Ward 1. And I'm going to read a statement from Dr. Kari Norgard, who couldn't be here tonight. Dr. Norgard is Professor of Sociology and Environmental Studies at the UO, and she writes, "I strongly urge the Eugene City Council to consider a resolution in solidarity with the Standing Rock Sioux in their protection of sacred lands at the risk of violation by the Dakota Access Pipeline. While the struggles of the Standing Rock Sioux community may appear unrelated to our lives here in Eugene, the central questions of tribal sovereignty, human rights, and human dignity faced by the land protectors are of direct relevance to our community. While this issue may appear to be taking place far from our homes here in the Willamette Valley, their struggles on the front lines of climate change increasingly connect us all. Thank you."
I'm going to close the public forum and thank everyone for coming and speaking on behalf of a lot of important issues tonight. Thank you very much. I look to the council to see if anybody has... Counselor Clark.
There are several things I want to say, but I guess I'll say to the gentleman from Ward 7, the way our council rules work, at our next meeting, a counselor who voted in favor of something like we did with the annexation has the ability to move to reconsider a decision. And I don't know anything about, in specifics, about that particular vote that we took earlier, but I do hear that you wanted to come and talk about that. And I wanted you to know that I'm willing to move at Wednesday for reconsideration if you convince me that there's a good idea that maybe we should talk about that annexation a little bit more before we vote. I just wanted to give you that option. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming down tonight. It's really good to listen to all the views, because these are really important issues. This is not part of my regular council duties, my council commission committee assignments, but I am a member of an organization called SELA. S-E-L-A. It stands for Safe Energy Leadership Alliance. It's composed of elected officials and tribal leaders from British Columbia, Washington, Oregon, Idaho, and Montana, and we are united in opposing unsafe oil shipments and the proposals to build oil terminals on the Puget Sound and Graves Harbor and the Columbia River. There have been a couple of victories last year. Federal judges denied a transfer station on ancestral fishing grounds on the Columbia River for the Yakima Tribe, and they denied a terminal, I believe it was to Soro, Texaco Terminal on Lamy, across from Lamy Island, up at the north end of Puget Sound, close to Bellingham. The federal government is finally starting to recognize Indian treaty rights, and so I would be happy to introduce the resolution to the council in support of Standing Rock in opposing the Dakota Access Pipeline. That's right up my alley. Thank you.
Who else? Move on then to the next item. Thank you again, everyone. We have a public hearing now on an ordinance extending the rental housing code's sunset date and providing for an effective date. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an opportunity for the public to provide feedback on the rental housing ordinance that extends the sunset date to March 1, 2017. The extension would allow time for council to further discuss recommendations proposed by the Housing Policy Advisory Board. If no action is taken, the code will sunset on September 30 of 2016. Council is tentatively scheduled for action on September 26.
You? I'm going to officially open that hearing, and those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. Norton Cabal is first, followed by Susan Conley.
Mayor Piercy, members of the council, my name is Norton Cabal. I chair the Intergovernmental Housing Policy Board. When the rental housing code was renewed four years ago, at your request, you were requested that we develop an oversight mechanism for the operation of the code. We did that. We created a committee with heavy landlord representation to study the code. This was as a result of concerns expressed by the landlords, and I'll try to synopsize those into two categories. One, the code is inefficient, costly, and not necessary. The other is that there were allegations or concerns about unprofessionalism and perhaps bias on the part of the enforcement team. We spent the last four years reviewing complaints, looking at the operation, the finances of the code, and we found that in the first instance, in terms of the code being inefficient and expensive, that's true. It's not so much a result of too many coffee breaks on the part of staff, but the funding mechanism. There's a $10 door tax on every rental unit. Landlords come and go, property managers come and go. It's very expensive to maintain that billing system. I will leave it to you. It's a political decision on whether the code is necessary or not. The other concern expressed was that there was bias, a possible bias, and unprofessionalism on the part of city staff. We found just to the contrary. We searched high and low for complaints about that kind of behavior and found absolutely none. We found that the staff and this program, just like Public Works, is very highly professional and indeed went above and beyond in their effort to communicate with landlords the requirements, the necessity, and things that they could do. I recognize that today you're just talking about extending the code for six months to review it in further detail, and the Housing Policy Board, of course, supports that. In addition, I want to assure you that the Housing Policy Board stands prepared to support, continue to provide oversight for the code enforcement if that's necessary or whatever role you choose for us to undertake.
Thank you very much. Next up is Susan Conley, followed by Dennis Cassidy.
Good evening. I'm Susan Conley. I live in downtown Eugene. Thank you all so much for your service. My husband and I have owned rental property here in Eugene for over 25 years. We have 11 units in Eugene. We've paid you folks, or somebody, $1,100 now. Now, this was okay with me for quite a while, since I thought there must be a need, but I've been to your website now, and I've read all the information, and there doesn't seem to be a need. Not only that, there seems to be an awful lot of money out there for very little work, and there's in fact a surplus of, what is it, $363,000? Maybe it's 200. In any event, we've never received a complaint in over 25 years. Now, this outfit's only been around for 11, but we've never had a problem at all with any of our renters. Matter of fact, we never raised our rents on any existing renter in 25 years. We are good landlords. So I went into the website, and I looked at a couple of documents that I'm sure you have. The first one is for your work session that was on July 13. And in that document, it says there's about 35,550 rental units in Eugene. At 10 bucks, that comes to 10 bucks per unit. But it said the program receives about 300 calls a year from tenant. That's six calls a week for that much money. Six calls. In the 11 years that the program has been in existence, it says that there's 303 complaints have been filed. That's about 2.3 per month. Then I went to this 316 memorandum from the Eugene Rental Housing Committee. It kind of said the same thing. Quote, "The program has been expensive to run. It costs about $300,000 annually." Now, that's a little less than my math, but somewhere in there is how much it costs. That works out, this is again quoting from the committee, "That works out to be almost $12,500 per complaint." Actually filed, or excuse me, $30,000 per order to correct. That's, I guess, a letter to the landlord saying, you know, fix whatever it is. Or $285 per call logged. That's a lot of money for almost nothing. They went on to say that in the last three years, 72 complaints were logged. 30 required orders to correct, and 22 were resolved before the inspection, and the rest of them were either not founded, or the tenant failed to pursue the complaint. So 52 complaints in three years. That averaged one point. Am I done already? Oh, darn. Anyway, read the reports. It's all there. It's a lot of money for nothing.
Dennis Cassidy is next, followed by Robin Blumgarden.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and city manager. My name is Dennis Cassidy. I'm vice president of Rental Owners Association in Lane County. We are the largest of 15 chapters in the state. We're under the umbrella of Oregon Rental Housing Association. The Rental Owners Association has a membership of 1,035 members. We picked up six new members just last week. We represent, our membership represents over 15,000 rental units. We have monthly membership meetings. We put on two to three educational seminars per month. Our purpose is education. We teach fair housing. We try to teach our members to be good landlords, stay out of trouble, stay out of court. We would prefer to see the code repealed or abolished, as we feel it is only duplication of Oregon landlord-tenant law. Currently, over $300,000 has been collected by the rental housing code, and with the anticipated growth of another 34,000, 36,000 people moving in, that a lot of those will be homeownership, but a lot of those will also be renters. So that anticipated influx of people will add to the surplus that currently exists. When this was enacted, the rental housing code was enacted in 2005. Initially, the money was going into the general fund. We lobbied and got that out of the general fund and into a designated fund so that we could track the money. Had we not done so, I fear that it would, being in the general fund, the surplus that we currently have would not be there. Several years ago, Pete Kearns, the police chief, seeing that surplus money of whatever it was at the time, he lobbied, or he approached the council and wanted to grab that money to help police the West University neighborhood. I spoke at that time, and I said that money is for one purpose only, and that's to administer the rental housing code. Fortunately, he was not able to put his hands on that money. The Rental Owners Association at this time believes the sunset clause should stay in place and, at a later date, reduce the annual door fee. Thank you.
Robin Blumgarden is next, followed by Brian Cox.
Robin Blumgarden, I believe I'm in Mr. Pryor's district. I'm a small landlord, very small, and I've been paying this since I've been a landlord. I'm in favor of continuing the sunset clause, and I believe that this law duplicates state landlord-tenant law. And I don't see how it really helps me as a landlord, and there is apparently a lot of money out there just sitting around and getting spent for, I'm not sure what, but anyway, I would like to continue the sunset clause. Thank you.
Brian Cox is next, followed by Rick Williams.
Mayor Piercy, council members, my name's Brian Cox. I live in unincorporated Eugene. I own a downtown building, and I own rentals throughout town in a number of your areas. I wanted to talk to you because I'm a practicing lawyer here in town. I've been practicing 26-plus years, and about half my career, I represented tenants. I made my living representing tenants, and I didn't eat if I didn't do my job right. I became a landlord lawyer later, and for about the second half of my career, I've done both. I own rental housing. I maintain exemplary relations with my tenants, and I like to brag about that because I do a good job. I am not speaking on behalf of the Rental Owners Association, but I'm also a member and a board member with them. That came around because I believe in their mission and their educational goals. I'm here to talk to you today about letting go of the rental code. And the reason why is this. Myself and another lawyer probably represent a large part of the market share of landlords. That means we deal with the landlord side of problems that go on in town. I think the rental code has come up in a conversation maybe twice, maybe three times since it's come out in all my clients ever. It's never been a relevant part of anything I've ever done with me and my clients, ever, and I represent thousands of rental properties in this town. So that's one answer. It's a lot of money, and I listen to these other people ask for money for things that really there's a strong need for. And I hear that there's a large surplus, and I hear that there's numbers that don't justify the kind of dollars that are being spent. I also hear landlords tell me, whether it's perception or true, they believe that their cost of being a landlord is going up at the very first time they're seeing an opportunity to raise rents. These are landlords who have held rents steady for years and years and years for a bad economy. Many of them are selling. The unintended consequence of that could be that we see a tighter rental housing, and a tighter rental housing is not going to serve our tenants, so we could set up a situation where we're costing ourselves into a more expensive problem. I encourage the council to let the rental housing code go, the enforcement program go.
Rick Williams is next, followed by Tasha Burkett.
Hello. My name is Rick Williams. I'm a citizen of Eugene, Oregon, in District Ward 8. I'm a college student who's finally taking the leap into going to my own apartment, living independently, and I will be someone who is going to be renting someplace. One of the reasons I have been hesitant over the years is hearing my friends and my family's personal stories of living in Eugene. I'll start with my sister. When she was living in a house, this house was not properly weatherproofed. For the window panes, because they were not double-pane, there would be a large amount of condensation on the inside, so much that it would need to be opened periodically throughout the day so that mold would not grow. This is the same house that she put my newborn niece into, because that's the only place she lived. Following that, in the bathroom, it was not heated, and so it was significantly degrees colder than the rest of the house during winter, something that is supposed to be protected under this housing code. Following the story, there's a story of my friend Reed. His house, part of his roof is getting overgrown by blackberries, something that because of the codes and the policies that his renters have in place, he's not allowed to go out onto his roof. And so if he did go and clear those blackberries themselves, then he would get in troubles with his renter. Following that, a possum also came into his house from a hole it dug under his sink. If that's not structural integrity problems, I don't know what those are then. Following that, for my friend Maria, she has serious plumbing and ventilation issues. She has to scrub down her bathroom every single week with bleach because of how She has to scrub down her bathroom every single week with bleach because of how much mold grows in that one-week period. In her bedroom, her clothes are damp in the morning when she goes to get dressed. These are issues that they have to fix. And a couple of weeks ago, I didn't even know that this policy was in place, that this housing code existed. My friends and my family are now working towards fixing these things through this program. And so I'm asking you, the city council members, to uphold this housing code because it is needed. Thank you very much.
Asked up is Tasha.
A little bit of a big laptop, sorry. Thank you, council, for hearing me tonight. My name is Tasha Burkett. I'm a Eugene resident in Ward 4. I would like to urge you tonight to continue the rental housing code. I currently live in the Otzen Row in the area of Eugene, but for privacy reasons, I won't name my specific housing complex. In my time there, I've had to make a few home repairs because my maintenance is just spectacularly inefficient in its response time. That includes my garbage disposal, my dryer, my plumbing. I even have, still to this day, do not have a smoke alarm in my hallway. It's just wires hanging down, and I'm pretty sure that unless I utilize this program, it's never going to get put back up. Thankfully, I do have recourse with all these issues. I've sat knowing about this program in my back pocket, knowing that if I couldn't take care of it myself, I have this as like if I need it in that scenario. But unfortunately, I don't want to see my friends going through the same situations. Like Rick said, I also have friends dealing with black mold that their management won't take care of and that until recently haven't known about this program that they could use it to take care of. I don't want to see people continuing to live in substandard conditions going forward without the ability to actually have some recourse to take care of it outside of going through an expensive civil suit with their landlord, taking months until it finally gets fixed because that's the other option. Because living for months in squalor to get your landlord to actually do their job seems a bit silly. I know far too many students that move halfway across the country, blind in unknown conditions, especially in these student housing complexes, not knowing exactly when they're entering and not knowing that they have this program that could potentially help them in these scenarios. So I urge you very much so to not only continue the program, but to also better advertise it and make it aware to the citizens because I'd like to see it far more widely used and that money that is being set to actually be used by its citizens. Because I've heard enough horror stories from tenants in this town to know that it is a common sense program that should actually stay. Keeping a program that provides protections for tenants and an avenue to ensure safe housing shouldn't be a question, and I hope that's evident to the council. I thank you for your previous support for students especially and hope you continue to do so tonight. Thank you so much for your time and the opportunity to speak.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank everybody for coming and ask for questions or comments from the city council. Yes, Councilor Pryor.
I serve on the Housing Policy Board with Norton, so I've been kind of familiar with this topic as we've been going on about it. And I think one of the points that did come up and is one that is of interest to me is the notion of the surplus that has built up over the fee. I know it's hard to estimate what the cost of the program will be versus the money that's been raised, but for two or three years now, it has been developing a surplus, and the city manager has it within his authority to change the rate. And I've encouraged him in the past at meetings to take a look at that, and I'll just reiterate again, I think if we do have that much of a surplus that's built up over multiple years, I would encourage the city manager to review that cost and make sure that what we're charging per door matches what the actual cost to operate the program is.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Manager, when we've had reviews from the staff that work in that program, my recollection was either two or three full-time employees in that department. Could you help me remember what's accurate there?
I don't know, but it's... Come on up. It's a calc, you can write here.
So we have an equivalent to 2 FTE. The time is actually spread over several FTE, probably six to seven, but it's an equivalent of 2 FTE.
Thank you very much. The only thing that I suppose I have as a question is the lady that mentioned the amounts of money and the amounts of service that we're able to provide through, I think, a reasonably valuable program. So although I recognize the duplication, so I would want to probably ask more about the efficiencies there, I think, as we move forward in future budget times or whatever it be.
Councilor Zelenka?
Yeah, I'm a strong supporter of the program, and I understand the issue of the surplus. The question I had is, one of the things I've heard over and over again is people don't know about this program, which leads me to believe that the program isn't well advertised and there's not an education component to it that's maybe sufficiently funded. So when we come back and talk about this in September 26th, can you bring back the education awareness campaign component of this? And if we were to beef that up, what would that look like?
Yes, we can bring that back.
Councilor Evans?
Yes. The first speaker, Mr. Cabal, talked about two sides of this coin, and one of them was the fact that the, how expensive it was, and other speakers talked about in terms of administering the code, but that there was some structural issues with the code that needed to be adjusted or fixed. And I don't necessarily want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think that protections are necessary for renters, you know, from some people who abuse their right and their privilege to rent properties. I've recognized that most people are trying to obey the law who are renters in this community. But if there are people who are abusing their privileges being, you know, property owners who are renting, and we need to make sure that those renters are protected. But by the same token, we also need to make sure that the ordinance is operating appropriately, and we need to find out if there are structural issues that make the code inefficient and expensive to administer, that we need to make adjustments to that before we, you know, move forward.
What we can do is when we come back with the work session following this, we can try to bring back that kind of information as well that you can talk about as a council.
And one other question, has anyone brought it to staff's attention that there are issues specifically that renters have, not renters, but property owners have with regard to provisions in the code that are not workable or usable or inefficient?
I know we're shallow, Rob.
Because I'd like to know more about what specifically, you know, we're talking about that makes the code inefficient, clunky, unworkable.
So I don't want to put words in Norton's mouth, but what I believe he was referencing was the administration of the program is expensive, the upkeep of the database, keeping track of change in ownership. That's an expensive process of updating that, doing the billing piece of it. I don't, I haven't heard any feedback on the actual code itself being not workable. So that's, I believe that's all I've heard.
Well, maybe that can be something that's brought back for the work session so that we can address it.
I guess the only thing I would add to that myself is if there is a way to reduce the amount we take when people have a better and better years of no problems, they're good landlords, is there something we can do back the other way? So...
We can look at all those kinds of things.
Discount for no complaint.
I think it's like the no complaint discount, yes. I just think that that's kind of like, your goal, as we all know, is to have good landlords. So if people are good landlords, if it works out in terms of the finances, I think it would be worth us, because it'll probably make you pay more to deal with that, but in terms of implementation, but something to think about. And I think that's a good outreach to people who are doing what we want them to do. Okay, anything else? All right. Lynn, this evening, thank you so much.